We have two items on the work session for discussion. The first item on the work session is discussion on the Peninsula Plan update. After that, the discussion on the Clerk-Treasurer White Paper that was presented to council last week. In regards to the discussion on the Peninsula Plan update, you were provided several pieces of information on the work session packet which was available to the public on the city website and Facebook page. Some of the information that was included would have been some information from a letter from the Manistee Manufacturing Council, their perspective, you would have already received that, a letter from Reeve Riley Stash American Materials. They also submitted a letter for your information, a memo from the city engineer regarding the increase of truck traffic and such. In addition to that, you've also received a letter, an attorney opinion from Attorney George Sanger, he's here tonight if you have any specific questions you would like to have him address. We've also, I also asked Ms. Kathy Moore of the Alliance for Economic Success, I believe I saw Kathy, I did, to be here this evening in case you had any specific questions about the physicians themselves. We all recognize the importance of jobs, independent of where those jobs are located, we want to ensure that we do everything we can as the City of Manistee and the Alliance for Economic Success to ensure that economic opportunities are researched and gone after, even if it's not on any one particular piece of property. So, all of that information is available to you tonight. We've discussed this matter on several occasions. City Attorney George Sanger and I have talked about the fact that seeing how this is a work session, we really can't and should not ask for, you know, formal council opinions on where you're at on this, this isn't the point of a work session discussion. This has been an issue which I believe is important for council to formally discuss as well as make a formal decision on how we move forward. So, one of the thoughts that George and I have been discussing is the fact that, independent of where council's at tonight in the work session discussion which will commence after a few minutes, we thought it'd be appropriate to have this on a council agenda to get a formal declaration of city council as to which direction. If you want staff to work on committing the development agreement, or we believe the development agreement is where it should be in stance. I think that's important for the community and for council to take some formal action on that. That's kind of where we are leaning on doing that on the council agenda. George has drafted some tense language, would you just kind of read that, George, before they get started?
And maybe as a sort of introductory to all of this, I've had conversations with attorneys for, an attorney for Mr. Sanger and also an attorney general counsel for Reeve Riley. I don't think it would be a surprise to council that they don't share the same opinion about the amendment of the development agreement. Council for Reeve Riley believes that Reeve Riley should be able to be part of, or be required to be part of, any approval for an amendment to the development agreement. I've laid out some of my opinion with regard to that for council in the materials that were presented. But what's been expressed by Reeve Riley, you know, is something that we, and I certainly take seriously and council will need to take seriously. And so, one thought that city manager and I have discussed is that if at the next city council meeting, a motion were presented for vote, that essentially would indicate that the city manager and city attorney were directed to negotiate the terms of an amendment to the development agreement. That motion then could be voted upon by council. If council does not approve that motion, then we know where you stand in the question of whether or not Reeve Riley is entitled to participate in or have a say in the amendment of the development agreement with the moot point because council would not be proceeding with an amendment. If council would pass a motion along those lines, then the city manager and I would then begin discussions with Mr. Sanger with regard to amendment of the development agreement that would also give the opportunity for Reeve Riley, if it chose to pursue whatever remedies it may have in court. I've expressed to council the idea of a third-party beneficiary under a contract. The third-party beneficiary is an entity that is not a direct party to the agreement but may have rights as though they were a direct party to the agreement. Whether or not Reeve Riley can, whether their status rises to that or not, I think is to be seen, but if we follow the procedure, I've outlined, and council's direction at the council meeting next week was to proceed with a negotiation for amendment of the development agreement, would give the opportunity for Reeve Riley to address that if they chose to again in court. And so, that was the city manager in my discussion, and I thought that seemed like a fair plan and allows all parties involved their opportunity and their say.
If it did proceed to court, who would represent the city?
I don't believe, I haven't researched that particular question, I don't, but having said that, I don't believe that this would fall under the Michigan Municipal League Property and Liability Pool. I would have to double-check that. This one may fall under us needing to secure private, you know, our own attorney to represent us, but I will double-check that question tomorrow and I will email that out to council. I just don't know the exact answer tonight.
So, if the MML doesn't represent the city, then we're going to have to hire an attorney.
And the thought behind that potential court case is one that hopefully would not involve any protracted litigation. The sole question I think would be whether or not a judge would enter some sort of preliminary injunction or temporary restraining order, finding that Reeve Riley would have standing to be able to participate or be required to participate in any amendment to that development agreement. That's sort of the take I have on it. And I had a discussion with general counsel for Reeve Riley regarding that today. I don't know what, you know, their plans would be under those circumstances or whether or not they'd even pursue that.
So, therefore, you may not even go to court. All we're trying to do is get an answer whether they have a third-party claim here. And if they do, well then, that changes everything.
Again, I think it's a two-step process. If the motion, the council did not pass the motion, it's a moot point because then they're not even going to ask for amendment of the development agreement. If it did pass the motion to establish that status, if you will, to be a party to the amendment to the development agreement, our suggestion would be Reeve Riley that we should pursue that in court, and we certainly are going to honor whatever court order would be presented to the city in that circumstance.
So, to answer your question, no, we don't know how the court would ultimately rule on that. We have no way of knowing that until that motion is filed or that direction is taken by other parties.
And again, they may choose not to pursue that.
It's unknown. So, even if, say, the court rules in favor of Reeve Riley, then Sanger's attorney can come back and challenge that?
Well, you know, and it may be a little bit premature just because I'm not sure if they would take that action or if they would take the action along the lines I'm suggesting. But conceptually, I would see it as a court case that would be filed that there'd be three parties involved, the Sanger entities, Reeve Riley, and the city, and the judge would make its ruling, and, you know, that's what would be followed.
Much like, much like the information on the impact upon the roads or employment opportunities, this information is given to you as council members to have a complete view of the issues in front of you and allow you to make the best decision from where you're sitting. So, we felt it was important that you had all of this information available to you for your discussions. So, I would, at this point in time, if there are, I'm not sure if there's additional information, we presented all the information, we've had to council, I think at this point, it's really up to a council discussion as to the direction that you want to move into, and we're trying to assist with answering any questions we have for you tonight. Everyone's got the information, we all know what the issues are in front of us, I believe we do. If we don't, then if this would be good to help us right now to let us know that you believe there's some additional information that would be helpful for you to help guide you in which direction you want to move into. We know that council member Whitliff will not be here tonight, as well as will be unavailable for next week, we know that, be informed of that. But I'm also trying to be responsive of Mr. Sanger's request to expedite this process more quickly too.
I'd like to move it on, you know, like get it over with as quick as possible, one way or another, for or against, or you think put it on the agenda for next week? I got that for us, gotta go. And it's wishes of the council, whether you proceed or not proceed, so nothing more than putting it on.
And I can't think of any more information that I would need at this time, myself. You've been more than open with what you had, so.
Again, Mr. Sanger's here this evening, if you have questions. I know it's a work session, so I'll tell Mary, I need to determine how she wants to do that. I wanted to make sure that Ms. Moore was here this evening, if you had any specific questions about the employment opportunities.
That's what I'd like to hear from Mrs. Moore.
And Representative Reeve Riley are here also this evening, so.
And this is all part of your first discussion because I really kind of see this as a two-pronged issue, one, dealing with an agreement with Sanger, and the second, dealing with the peninsula itself and whether the council sees that zoning needing to be changed or which would happen if we wanted to.
I completely agree with you, Mayor. I think that it really is a two-pronged event, you have a request in front of you that you have to deal with. If, through our conversations and discussions, and I put this in my memo to council, which was available to the public, if in our conversations and discussions, we come to a belief or conclusion or a concern that the current zoning is not still appropriate, isn't still a viable plan, whatever that may be, my recommendation to council would be is that we take a deliberate and thoughtful process to evaluate that entire peninsula area, which would include city council, planning commission, staff, and honestly, the residents of the peninsula. I think we have approximately 30-plus folks out there between business, we have Galoup, we have residents, we've got MS Creative, and I mean everything from basically Auto Value, I think it's Auto Value, Auto Value on that corner heading towards peninsula. I think it's important for council to hear from those businesses which have invested funds into their property based upon that plan that was created. And then after all of those conversations and discussions, I think then we can look at how we move this plan forward. Does this stay currently as it is, or do we move into a different direction? I just think that we have spent, we spent multiple years coming up with this plan, multiple years, we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to invest in this plan through streetscaping, CSO projects, various other projects. I just think it needs a thoughtful, deliberate process.
I agree.
Isn't that what we're supposed to be doing on tonight's agenda?
I did not think that that was what we were supposed to be doing on tonight's agenda. I thought tonight's agenda honestly was talking about which direction you want to move forward with the request made by Mr. Sanger.
Because it's a discussion of the man's plan update.
I'm sorry, I could have been more clear about that. I honestly was focusing on the request by Mr. Sanger, we're always focusing on.
I guess I'd like to hear from Mrs. Moore on alternatives, seeing that she's here tonight.
Good evening. Yeah, I can give you an update on some of the projects we've talked about that would be impacted in some way or another on the peninsula, just as an update. One of them is Potlatch, with the logs, I was contacted by Potlatch to review other potential sites. He has previously been working with Mr. Sanger and is still in conversation with Mr. Sanger as a potential option. We have reviewed three other sites. I was simply facilitating meetings at the local level, which we did, and then I know he's still been in contact with Mr. Sanger, and that's really a business decision on which site he chooses. There was some pros and cons to each of the locations that we had visited. The second is, that had been discussed previously, was BB Steel, which as you recall, was Steve Blank and Rami Balbahani, I believe is the last name's pronounced. The status of that, as you know, AES has been assisting that prospective developer since July of 2012. We've engaged various local resources, state resources, MEDC, DEQ locally, even in contact with ISD regarding placing children in school and relocation resources. At this time, we need the prospective developer to apply for an air quality permit through DEQ. We've been discussing it for months, that has not happened yet. And in order to move forward with MEDC for any incentives to the state, there's a staffing investment chart, it's called, which really just outlines very clearly and bluntly, this is the amount of investment, these are the amount of jobs, and that's what they base any incentives upon. And then also reviewing the financial capacity and background of not only the individual but the corporation and the investors within that. At this time, we have also not been able to secure that information. So, we have invested a significant amount of time and energy in this, and so we are at a standstill until we are able to receive that information from that developer and he makes the application to the DEQ for that permit. I do know Mr. Blank has gone to Arizona for a few weeks, at least a few weeks, usually goes there for the wintertime, and he'd been holding off, and he chose to go where it was a bit warmer because he was also in a holding pattern with a potential developer. So, that is where that one stands. And then there has been a third project that I've been in contact with Mr. Sanger. I have not been in contact with that prospective project recently, but I do believe that those conversations are still being had. Then more recently, another new project has come up, and a team has been assembled to work on supporting a potential RFP, and a team was assembled, city officials, city manager, DPW, planning and zoning, Bronfield consultant, myself, and then actually council member Gustad in his capacity with Consumers Energy, not a city council. So, that's relatively exciting, that actually came through the state. Sometimes these things can be a long shot, but at the same time, the more information we receive, the more and more we're feeling pretty positive. It's something we can pursue, and if not in this particular capacity that they're requesting, having this information assembled to shop it around, so to speak, with other similar types of projects. So, that's been fairly encouraging as well. And that is all I have, unless you have any other particular questions.
Just one quick question. So, there is alternatives for a deep-water port?
There are different sites, but in different capacities. For example, we have visited Tondu, Jim Tondu, the drop-four site next to his property they own, but he had indicated that a dock and some infrastructure would need to be built at that site for it to be accessible. We had also visited Mr. John White's property, and John is here, and John has some plans to develop some infrastructure on his property, but at this time, it's not ready to go today or tomorrow, so to speak, but I believe with his efforts, you know, offered to help secure, you know, he needs assistance with permits or anything like that, I feel like he could be good to go, so to speak, in several months or a few months. And then we'd also visited Reeve Riley, and Reeve Riley does have the current facilities. So, again, and then after Terry from Potlatch and I departed, I know he went to visit Mr. Sanger, and again, it's really Potlatch's decision on what they're going to choose to do. So, we were just facilitating the meetings.
But they know the different areas they could pursue.
Yeah, and for them, it's, again, it's the business decision on the timing and their interest in timeframes and what they want to do for their company.
Okay, thank you.
But within the City of Manistee, you know, part of our strategic goals is to have several options, a deep-water port, you know, and that being a selling point for the City of Manistee. However, even though we have some sites like north of the bridge, there are some issues with actually it being deep water, is that correct?
Right, there are different, various locations around the lake, but water depth is important as well as the infrastructure, as well as having, like the rocks, obviously if you've got rocks, you can't put a boat, you have to have different conveyor systems and that type of thing. So, it depends, and I'm by no means the expert in shipping, we have a couple people in here that are, but the different types of equipment you would need to load and offload materials, depending on material, how close you can be to shore, excuse me, and also the materials that you're bringing in, the boat, I mean, you could, you might not need that much depth, it just depends on the weight of the boat and everything else. So, I mean, there's various factors, but you're correct in my understanding that there's some areas that just aren't going to be deep enough to accommodate.
And how many would you say in the City of Manistee that are currently viable without additional drudging, whatever?
Okay, I would have to say, please correct me if I'm wrong, sites that have the capacity tomorrow to pull, well, not tomorrow, because if it were open water, Ed Sanger's on the peninsula, John White, depending again on what type of loading, offloading, potentially a sentry boat depending on, I mean, I think there's water, but I mean, depending on what type of loading, offloading.
Reeve Riley.
Sorry?
Reeve Riley.
And Reeve Riley, and I believe that's all.
And then being from the economic development, you know, we're all interested in jobs in the zoning out there, I guess we have, you know, are we missing opportunities, you know, what we're trying to decide, is that properly, you know, zoned out there, are we making the best use of it? You know, we tried, when I first got in council, that's when we changed, you know, went for the cool cities blueprint over there, and really nothing's, a whole lot's been done towards that plan, and yet now we have, it seems like, opportunities that do not fit within that plan. And are we missing, are there other opportunities that we missed out on because of the zoning? From your perspective?
Right, I can't speak to previous, to me being here, because I don't know. As I mentioned, the last project I mentioned on here is a new project we've been working on. I think, I think that this one is a bit more in the spirit of what the Peninsula Plan was meant to be and could be the catalyst for that to move forward. And it's difficult, I mean, to not have the crystal ball because I can absolutely see the perspective of opening that back as a deep-water port and having warm and industrial commercial easily enough, but then there's also the, well, what if, because then there's also the other hand of what if we're able to do this, this, and this, and that could be a catalyst as well. So, it's very difficult for me to say, well, what are the missed opportunities because we're still exploring what those opportunities could be. The difficult thing with these types of projects and so many others is, you know, we can put every, you know, all hands on deck in state and local and regional and maybe federal and all gung-ho on pulling resources together, but if that last person assigns the check or doesn't flip the switch and walks away, well, then that's a missed opportunity. So, we can pull all these things together, and if it doesn't happen, then it's like, well, that didn't happen, so should we look at something else? So, I do agree with exploring the option, whichever way it goes, just making sure it's a thoughtful process, long-term, look at the big picture, is this what's going to be best for us? Look at all the implications, let's go this route. And recognizing that if we do go this way, then you know what, next month, there might be something that comes up over here that we say, you know what, we lost that one because we're going this way, but we don't, we don't know, because maybe if you go this way, you'll get three or four other things show up. So, it's unfortunate, you have to say, it's a risk. I mean, we don't, we don't have people beating down the door either way, I mean, we have opportunities come, we have opportunities go, and sometimes, quite honestly, it's a crapshoot. It's sometimes it's an all or nothing, and sometimes you're waiting for something, and then other times, we have multiple things all at once that we have to contend with and sort through, so.
But based on your current knowledge and the current inquiries, is what is zoned out there now prohibiting future possible development? Or if we opened up in some respect that zoning out there, do you foresee that there might be more opportunities for growth?
That's a difficult one. I think as far as, you know, industrial growth, that's a pretty obvious one, as far as Peninsula Plan, as far as the housing, condo, and that type of vision, I think honestly, this seems to be a difficult, you know, looking at the condo inventory, looking at some of the residential housing, look at, you know, some of those types of things, I think it would be difficult to sell a $300,000 or $400,000 condo out of the peninsula. I mean, it's a reality, we have other housing projects that can be pointed to on Manistee Lake that those are vacant and other housing places in the city. So, I think, I think it just, I guess it's very hard for me to make a definite decision on that without being able to explore further. I hate to be so indecisive.
Has AES ever approached any senior retirement communities?
Not that I am currently aware of. We are embarking with the Northwest Council of Governments Region on housing inventory, target market analysis. So, there's been a local group that's been assembled ranging from low-income, for example, Glenn from the Housing Commission is engaged in that group, and maybe many social service agencies, AES Foundation, HSCB, Tribe, to assemble and look at housing of all types. So, I believe Sarah Howard would be engaged.
What I'm thinking is more the, there's three different ones up in the, I'm trying, up in the tribal city area. That are very nice, and it would have been very nice if we'd had something here so we could have moved our mother-in-law closer, my mother-in-law closer. But, you know, that's a personal interest for me, but I'm also looking at it, as Glenn and I age, if we don't want to leave the community, the last thing we want to do is maintain the house.
Sure.
And I don't want to buy, and after a certain age, you don't want to buy. But renting in a nice, you know, senior apartment with, you know, meals provided if you want, that type of thing.
Like an Independence Village or?
Yeah.
I think, I believe that senior housing, and again, the housing across all the continuum will be addressed in this housing work group, not just lower modern income housing, which is, of course, is a very important segment, but also we share you with economic development, if you're recruiting a physician to the community or recruiting a young family as teachers to the high school, I mean, what is the continuum of housing and senior housing is on that as well. So, that will maybe be a little option, that will be addressed.
That might be something where the condos work, because I'm not, I just, the condo market died, obviously, but it's just one of the many things that I had looked at for. market died, obviously, but it's just one of the many things that I had looked at for possibly changing out there.
That's all the questions I have, is there any other question? Okay, thank you.
Kenny, I can see where you were, where I could have been much more clear on this agenda item tonight. How it should have read is, discussion on the request by Mr. Ed Seng to amend the Peninsula Development Agreement. That would have been much more clear on the work session agenda, Steve, and that was the direction I was moving into, so I apologize for that.
But it sounds like council feels like they have enough information that we would like to proceed on the next council meeting, which I think you're recommending that.
Yes.
Instead of not doing us wrong, that we just go ahead and put that on the agenda, unless...
I have no problem.
Do you feel like you have enough information?
Yeah.
Here's kind of the motion that City Attorney Taylor and I were working on, motions to direct the City Manager and City Attorney to negotiate terms of an amendment to the Development Agreement, subject to the final approval by council. So even though next week, let's say, you take a motion to direct staff to work towards that, it still would have to come back to you in a final format, the agreement itself. You would be directing us to negotiate some terms and agreements, but the terms and agreements and the actual amended Development Agreement would also require council approval. Make sense?
Yep.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we're clear. So that, that might seem reasonable, everyone?
I concur. Yeah.
No, I'm just processing, why would we instruct staff to develop an agreement when we haven't determined whether we're going to amend the agreement or not?
I think the, our point of having that on the agenda for next Tuesday, which would be the...
Eighteen.
Thank you. Would be for you to set direction for staff to follow and to put this question about.
Yep.
If, if by chance, it doesn't get a motion and a second, and it dies for lack of motion, you've made your decision. If it gets a second motion and a second, there's discussion, there's a vote, and if it's voted down to not amend the Development Agreement, then we've got direction. If you vote in favor of amending the Development Agreement, then this issue has been addressed. So the goal for us, to my perspective, is, is this is a work session, you can't take final action on a work session. We've had a lot of conversation about this, a lot of discussion. I don't want to discuss something into the work session and have someone come back and say, well, they didn't even vote on it, this was just a work session discussion. I would like to get a final, council to formally take action one way or the other, and you've got all the information you said you need to make that decision, but I would like to see council take formal action, one way or the other, to provide that direction. Does that make sense?
Sure.
And then as far as the second, as the Peninsula Plan, looking at that, I got a letter from Councilmember Whitliff that he is really in favor of relooking at that and rezoning that to help bring more jobs, I think, you know, based on letters that I've received, like from the Manistee Manufacturing Council in support of relooking at that and other. I would like to have a work session on bringing those or another meeting, bringing all those parties that you described together to discuss that.
Okay.
Eddie, my concern is, I'm open to discussion. I don't, I don't want to feel that we're being pushed into a corner to make a decision quickly on what has a significant amount of impact on a significant amount of people and that was decided over a long period of time with a lot of time and effort from a lot of people. And again, I'm okay with looking at it again, but I don't want to say, you know, on the eighteenth, yes, and then we're rezoning. That doesn't make sense to me. So I think there needs to be a long, healthy discussion and a respectful discussion with all the parties involved that makes that a viable option, even if it isn't an option.
Yeah, and I think with a small enough group, honestly, and it really is a pretty compact group of property owners, that I think it's a small enough group of property owners, and again, Denise, you looked it up, do you remember the number of property owners? Give or take 30 plus, something of that nature. I think that's a small enough group that you really have the opportunity to engage them all.
Correct.
Whether it be a residential property owner or Mark Stansted, an MS creative who purchased the...
Steady.
W T Steady building, thank you very much, Councilmember Marko, and asked it to the auto value, to Mr. Seng, to Mr. Seng, to both of those, Jeff and Ed both.
Boy, great agency.
Sure.
You know, there are so many different people that are stakeholders there, and they definitely need to be heard also, as to what they feel.
I think it's a small enough group that you can engage them all, honestly. And the way you described it is my perspective.
Yeah.
So we will have that on the next council agenda as we read it to you. Anything else?
So you'll have these stakeholders here the next meeting?
Nope.
No.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
No, the next meeting is, will be a council agenda item, as we just read.
Okay.
To, for council to provide direction to take formal action on this request by Mr. Seng.
Okay.
He's asked for formal request, that's what we're asking you to do. And again, granted, knowing that Councilmember Whitliff is, will not be available next week, we just know that.
Okay.
Great, thank you very much for your help on that. The second item tonight, I will ask Mr. Bradford if you're up. Is, thank you. The second item tonight is that last week, Mr. Bradford and Mrs. Wright made a presentation to the council. Made a presentation to council regarding the Finance Clerk Treasurer, go ahead.
Thanks.
Okay, the Finance Clerk Treasurer White Paper that was presented to council, we provided hard copies of council last week to you, wanted to give you an opportunity to read those hard copies, there's a lot of information to go through, and we wanted to provide an opportunity tonight, not that tonight has to be the end point of these discussions, but provide ample time for council to ask questions tonight. The goal is to get council input, which will help staff prepare the draft budget of the 14, 15 fiscal year budget. The date for us to deliver the 14, 15, 50-year-old budget is the mid-part of March sometime, when we're going to be delivering it to council, so we think we're right on track for receiving your input on just getting the white paper.
I just have one, one question, actually. No, I take it back to, but Michelle's not here, so I will ask the second one. What would you see as the biggest hurdle to overcome if you combined and created an Administrative Services Department?
I think it would be a largely positive move. I think in the short term, you would have some adjustment with moving some of the duties around at the office with different individuals and getting them up to speed and doing that training, but that shouldn't take a real long time. What it does provide, though, is it provides us flexibility and resiliency and I think a better level of service to the departments internally.
Would you have to change the physical structure of the office down there?
No, we have a desk that's vacant right now.
What about the cost savings? Have you got any idea if there's any savings?
There really, there really would be minimal savings. I mean, we probably would be able to save a little bit on some of the supplies and stuff, but that's just a very small part of the budget. The real benefits are, I think, in efficiency and getting things done and alignment of skills and with responsibilities and duties.
One of the major changes here, if you'll call back, if everyone gets back into the Community Development White Paper, just briefly, if you send back to there, one of the items in the Community Development White Paper is if Mr. Rose was through the succession plan, if Maruster Rose was to retire, which he did in the end of July of 2013, then there was a proposed position, a clerical position hired, which would be at that point in time still a split position between the Finance Office, I don't, I'm not distinguished between Finance Clerk and Treasurer, I'm just saying the whole Finance Clerk office down there as well as the Community Development Office. I think at the time when we were drafting that particular paper, the thought probably primarily was, at least in my mind is, is that that body would be split between the departments, but spending a certain amount of time upstairs in the, in the Community Development Office. If you read that white paper, I think that would have been a natural takeaway that you would have taken from that. The conversation now under the Administrative Service Department changes that. It really doesn't change the allocation of the individual, but it does change the physical location more of that individual. There still will be a significant allocation of that individual helping out with taking the Planning Commission minutes, taking minutes and notes, and then talking with Ms. Blakesley. Those are some of the biggest areas that needs help with. Whenever, if you've ever been in a position where you're running a meeting and you're trying to take notes at the same time, succeeding is difficult to participate in a meeting and take notes at the same time. So she's identified that as one of her largest needs, is the helping BRA minutes and Planning Commission minutes, ZBA minutes, and Historic District Commission minutes. And this position, when you read it, would be filling in and assisting under those areas. It would also be able to assist on larger projects at the planning and zoning or building inspection, whether that be notification of, notification for 300-foot ZBA districts or various projects like that. So it's still being split among there, and we really haven't, I think, would take time to figure out what's that exact split, but there is a slight shift there, I think, from perception, at least there was from my belief.
Well, is that whether then it would merge into the Clerk and Financial Services Departments? Or are they two separate entities? Is that two separate organizations?
Are you referring to one of the other alternatives that was presented? Or are you referring to the administrative?
Administrative and then merge.
Right, all the merge goals is really combine the budgets, and it's basically a status quo with combined budgets. That position is still in the budget, it would still get hired, but it would probably be treated a little bit differently. It wouldn't necessarily allow for the job advancement, job growth in our department. It would, it would fill a little bit different role if it was reorganized in that fashion.
I held off, I held off on hiring that position because I really wanted to have some time in working with the Community Development Office, working with Denise, getting a feeling for what is the workload currently going on between herself and the other two individuals, the Building Inspector and the Facility Manager. So that was the reason for holding off on filling that position, as well as honestly, I knew there was going to be discussion how this fit in with the, with the Finance Clerk White Paper, so that was another reason for holding off until we were able to work through all those issues.
When would you hire this position, if this is okayed?
Well, wait, can I add something? It's already in the budget, so they already hire it. I don't think it's our position to, that's why we have Mitch and the permit, is efficiently run their departments and do so with that individual, then that's micromanaging if we say, well, should we approve this or not? I believe that's their position to make things efficient.
But it's in the, but it's in the white paper.
I know that, but it's basically for our information, but that's the way they want to form a company, and it's, it's a plate wheel thing, this is what we want to do, and don't be surprised if we move things around. Am I not right on this?
I'm not sure, I'd be so bold to make that statement.
Well, it's already a hire, and why should we be mean?
Well, I guess for me, if you could.
Sure.
I've read through this, I read, and I'm not sure, I'm not real clear as to what you're proposing and why.
Okay.
You know, as far as the setup and the reorganization within the Clerk and Treasury Finance Department, because you got, you know, you have your status quo, then we've talked about this administrative...
Service Department.
Service Department. And then this merge, which looks just like almost...
Status quo.
Status quo. So it gets them a little confused or not quite clear as to what you're recommending, why, and what are the differences?
The recommendation from staff, well, it really was the Administrative Service Department, that was the recommendation to staff.
That would be this, I think.
Thirty-four.
I said thirty-four.
I'm looking at the...
Thirty-eight is a chart.
Where it starts about the Administrative Service Department is thirty-four, and thirty-eight is the page where you see the...
So this is the setup that you're...
That's the goal.
That you like to go towards.
I know, that's the one that I prefer. If for another reason, it allows for some job growth and advancement, which is very important to keep employees.
My question to that, and it's tailored on to that, is, I, you know, your recommendations are, in all the white papers, I'd like that, because it gives us a good assessment of what current conditions are, what they could be, look like, and sometimes in the ivory tower, we don't necessarily get everybody involved, and what looks good on paper from a structural standpoint and even from a budgetary standpoint may not necessarily take hold when you get down to the employees, and to what extent were they involved in that discussion, and are there going to be some displacements or job duty adjustments that are going to create some obstacles or hurdles for those folks?
It's unfortunate that Michelle couldn't be here tonight, but I do have both Mary and Heather here, and they were involved at a fairly high level. I would venture to guess more or as much as any of the other white papers in kind of putting this together, and we made sure that we had buy-in. There are some duties that are shifted around, some of that's still a little bit inflexible as to what that might be, we'd have to work that out internally. But, but I guess to get back to the Mary's question, there's not really job displacement, what there is, is there's job growth. And this also sets us up, if you read through the succession planning part and looked at those years, Michelle's not retiring within, you know, five, six, forty-seven, forty-six years, somewhere in that, we need to be in a position to seamlessly manage that. The Administrative Services restructuring allows us to do that, assuming all of the people stay in place. But just that aside, because that's all in the future, immediately what this does is it gives us some more flexibility and resiliency to not only provide services to other departments such as Community Development or fill in where needed, but allows us to be a little bit more efficient down there because we don't have people displaced when somebody's on vacation and having to cover areas that they normally don't cover and maybe aren't the best use of time to do that. So I think that's the only ability I see within this department to allow any job growth whatsoever. So I think that's a positive, providing additional flexibility is a positive. I think it still provides the services to the Community Development Department that were anticipated and envisioned when John and their paper were put together and needed. And so I think, I think it really is a win-win situation, I mean, it's doing everything that we need it to do.
Well, in the new proposed setup, you're adding three, two additional positions reporting to Michelle's current position. A direction. I guess I'm comparing to thirty-two and two thirty-eight.
I mean, the way it works right now, and it's because of the fact that the clerk is really, reports to council and to myself, Michelle reports to me, and Heather reports, actually kind of drew Michelle to me, but more to me, and Mary also reports to Michelle, but I do all their evaluations. So it's, it's kind of, it's really not a change in what we're doing, it's kind of just a change in the way it looks. And the reason is that is in this scenario, Michelle would be more handling the day-to-day sort of, you know, scheduling and things like that to make sure things are covered, which we do collaboratively right now. It's really a misnomer to, say, we've got a clerk department with its own little silo and the finance department, its own little silo.
It's bug people, yeah.
We work cross-functional all the time, I mean, we were all in the same office, we worked together. It's just the way it's been drawn up on paper for the last 12 years and we budget it that way. So if anything, it helps to rationalize a little bit the way that the work chart is and how that works.
I guess I'm looking at, see what makes sense. Do you take the names out of it, you know, the personal names? And that's how I'm looking at this, because you are looking down on the future and what makes sense. So if we're changing that reporting structure, it looks like we're adding more responsibility to Michelle's position.
But we're also taking away responsibility. Well, we're also taking away responsibility from Michelle's position, because she won't be processing accounts payable anymore.
That is, that's highlighted there on the page thirty-seven, that, that chart right in the page, right in front of the one you're looking at. That chart was to really kind of give you a snapshot, ask you how those, how those responsibilities would, would be moving within that department.
But I'm looking at it more from not so much the day-to-day, but the reporting structure. And if you're adding people, is this, are you looking at like an increase in that position? So if it was a grade, say, two, you're moving upgrades? Is this, are we then approving potentially increases in salary?
Potentially, as we said in the paper, when, when these positions get reorganized, we would rescore them. And there's the potential for some of that. And if not, an increase, potentially if somebody could move into a different wage category. Is that likely to happen? We would need to score, I'm not sure that it's likely. I don't think the, the score right now are significantly different. When, or if this is implemented and there's a succession plan, then I think some of that changes. But I think, I mean, it all has to be looked at, like we've done with all of our restructuring, restructurings. When people change their responsibilities, you look at that, you rescore it, and you see if that, you know, if it means anything. But it's not, it's not a large dollar item.
But still, for me, I want that information before I make a decision. If you're asking me to make a decision to, we're going to end up, okay, we approve this, and then we look at the financial impact, rescoring it, and it changes dramatically.
I think at the end of that section of the white paper, it was mentioned, page thirty... Page thirty-nine? I gave an example, when Chief Bachman took over the public safety department, we got a 2% increase.
It was the financial, yeah.
So what the paper says, the total combined wages of existing and budgeted staff for new administrative services are about $260,000. In a way of example, only a 2% increase due to the restriction was equated about $5,000. And so if they implemented, the final impact would be determined during the budgeting process. So that gives you an idea of what that might look like. It could be more or less, but that was kind of the process that we're thinking about following.
Is that including the new hire, the portion?
No, because that's already in the budget.
Okay. I keep forgetting that part.
Existing and budgeted staff, that includes the $260,000.
Yeah, I think the biggest implication for me is a succession plan, you know? These, these people have worked for the city for a long time, and when Michelle retires, there's a possibility that one of these...
Highly skilled people?
Highly skilled people could move right into her job. And I think that is...
It's very clear that if Deputy Clerk Mary Bachman is still with the organization, that that's something that should be highly qualified.
Sure, sure.
And we point that out in the paper.
But that's not relevant as to how it's structured. It's based on the qualifications of the person and looking at the job that they want or go into. Just because you restructure a department doesn't necessarily mean automatically it makes someone qualified or disqualified or something like that.
Absolutely correct.
But I think it helps, but I...
And I think one of the areas that strikes me on the administrative service department, I'm not exactly sure how to cut it up, to be honest, but just throwing it out, is that I think you should, when you see the future additions, potential future additions, I would kind of slide those to the side if I was... So the Mark Hansen, the facility manager, the city assessor, those will continue to report to me, as is the building inspector and community development, as is my direct reports. The bigger issue here really is, is the Ramsdale Theater. Where is, where is the right fit for the Ramsdale Theater? I think that's a big discussion. But I think it's one that we're working through right now with the Ramsdale Theater and working through that strategic planning process. Which council is going to be involved in that strategic planning process? But I think that'll be a big question about where's the, where's the right place for that individual to go? I think another aspect, a lot of time is being spent by Ed and Michelle, is the 11 consultants. That would be IT, IT, right, or IT consultants. That would be our plumbing consultants, our HVAC consultants, electrical, electricians. I'm missing several of them, obviously, but you get the point of where we're at. That seems like an awful lot of those consultants. And there may be a better way for us to, that may be the right direction for them, have them all continue to report to Ed. That may be the most logical, direct, efficient way to work through, but I think we need to have some conversation internally among staff.
Wasn't there something in the... Oh, come on, Catherine.
And the reality is a lot of the...
In our benchmark.
And I'm glad you brought that up, because I was trying to find the page.
Yeah, and it's like, something in the benchmark.
I love it, that when you look at, again, as extremely capable and can take on these inhale them very well, but doesn't make sense. I mean, when you've got your finance director overseeing plumbing, electrical, mechanical, that doesn't make sense to me.
Right, right. And the reason those are there, and let's be clear on this as well, so that was anticipated in, in the community development white paper. So that's where they slid in the absence of having revisited what the recommendation was. But the two buildings that need the most plumbing, electrical, and HVAC, or have needed it, are the Ramsdale Theater and City Hall. And to say that these contractors are reporting, to me, isn't, isn't necessarily 100%, because if Dave needs work done over at the fire station, he calls Custom Machine Real directly. So we're more in contract administration, but an awful lot of what those vendors are doing is, has to do with those two buildings. If Top Line is doing work for Jeff at the wastewater treatment plant, Jeff, that doesn't run through me, Jeff deals with that. So I'm not...
And why wouldn't our city engineer be looking at this? I mean, these type of plumbing, electrical, mechanical, why wouldn't we not then structure that underneath our engineering?
Well, I mean, we wouldn't pay the engineer to administer their contracts and make sure they're paid. We do all the back office stuff. There just needs to be a primary point of contact, that's more or less what plays around.
I think that's what it is, it's more of a primary point of contact.
And if that wanted to go somewhere else, then we could do that, I guess that's where it is right now.
Some of them make perfect sense. In other words, Michelle is, Michelle is a, is the head staff liaison. So Michelle is the staff liaison, that makes perfect sense for that. So I just think we need to, the non-council financial advisors, website designer hosts, several of those do make, I mean, those make perfect sense from where they're located. But I think some of the other ones, they just need some, some direction and some attention and discussion, as to is there a more efficient way for us to, to allocate that? And honestly, keep the time that I have focusing on where we need to have them focused.
And I'm not saying that, I just agree with the proposal of the administrative team, but, you know, if we're truly going to there, and I have no issue with the current setup, but what is the financial impact? I mean, does that create additional...
So what you're saying is you would like to see us those positions scored and come back with a more firm financial...
And not to say that would be served, no, because they went into a higher score, but having that information before you make a decision is something I would want. As far as, you know, I agree, I don't know that the Ramsdale, that whole setup, if that's an appropriate place. Definitely some of those contracting services.
The Ramsdale, the Ramsdale has been a, it's been a big obligation of the finance clerk's office. Primarily, I would say on Heather and Ed for the last two years, three?
Yeah, and that decision was made when, when the city took it back over from the civic players. Because in order to operate the building, you've got to have, you have to have somebody who's responsible for it and take it and pay attention to it. The Ramsdale governing authority isn't a, isn't a management or an operations board, it doesn't do that. So I think the strategic planning process for the Ramsdale is important, because I think it's going to hopefully lead to maybe a better governance model, which is overdue. And, you know, there could be other alternatives that come out of that, and the council needs to be involved with that.
When is that beginning?
They're working on getting the consultant there, so they haven't, they haven't scheduled any time for that yet, but it's in the works. So that's, that's really important. I mean, would it be nice if the Ramsdale could run itself under Mike and have a different governance structure or something different? I think that's something that needs to be considered, but as it is right now, that's where it lives. Part of the reason is I'm, by ordinance, the representative on the Ramsdale governing board, our office does all the back office stuff. There's really no other logical place to put it right now. It just doesn't make any sense to put it anywhere else. Should it be somewhere else, long-term, maybe?
Yeah.
But right now, there really aren't any options.
Well, Mike Carey is the executive director, shouldn't he be...
Oh, he is. Mike is doing a great job.
I mean, he works under you, though, right?
Correct.
But if he's the executive director, shouldn't he have more responsibilities, take some of the responsibilities out?
He's taken an enormous amount of responsibility out of him.
So what I hear Eric saying is that you would like to see us provide some more financial impacts to the administrative service and bring that information back to council.
I would like to see that.
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, from my perspective, I'm okay with getting that, but from, to reiterate what I was saying earlier, is for me, it's about employee engagement, employee involvement, and, and buy-in from that group of people, because, again, I'd hate to see us make these structural changes and adjust workload and work structure without having their buy-in and their, their commitment to that. I love the flexibility, and I'm sure they're going to love the opportunities to say, hey, I can take a day off without having to, you know, part the season and whatnot, so... And then I also love the fact that Denise gets help where she needs it, and having some flexibility in those areas. And for me, that, that's well worth the 2%, 3%, or 4%, it may be an adjustment there, because keeping good people is critical for us to be successful and maintain the services we provide. And if this really helps them keep engaged and see a succession for their future, I'm all, I'm all for it, so...
And, and the staff that are most impacted by this are here tonight, if you'd like to hear from them, if that's appropriate. But, I mean, they were involved in that process and, and I think are fully on board with it.
Yeah, I think really about that department, if you've been down here, on any part of the bench, they're open. They're, they're, they're open, they are, they are the frontline opening social department to the general public. Not that the managers' offices aren't, the other offices aren't open, but they're open during lunch, they, they schedule their lunch, they, they really schedule themselves to be available for the public.
Oh, they do a great job, and I know.
Right, no, no, I'm just saying, that makes them a little bit different from other departments. That's why the flexibility is going to be so crucial for them.
And their customer service skills are just unbelievable. Very difficult to replace, too.
It gives us lots of, lots of room to grow, too, within the...
That's what I like about the administrative succession plan.
I'm, 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 we're happy to score some of those positions, work with those individuals. Now, I will say, it's going to be a couple weeks. There's some vacation time and some, some sick leave time that's being taken right now, so it's going to be a couple weeks while we're able to get that information back to you, but we'll do that at the very earliest opportunity. We'll get started on that right away.
I think they would want to know as well.
And again, Heather and Mary are here, if you have any specific questions, they don't get on camera very often.
I have one for Heather, but it will wait till after.
I have another question about that structure, and, and maybe you can help out with this. But the logical succession then, in that area, would Heather have an opportunity, or would you just say the deputy treasurer and payroll have an opportunity to also get cross-trained? If, let's say, for instance, our deputy clerk didn't want to necessarily ascend to the city clerk, would there also be enough training and opportunity for the deputy treasurer to in that role as well, with that cross-training?
I'm glad you asked that question. We were planning on sending Heather to the Clerks Academy starting this year. Just to, again, increase that flexibility.
Didn't want to necessarily see how people did. That position's got to go laterally, then I would obviously see a nice succession for either or, if they were both successful, acquiring the skills.
She's just one here in the treasury.
She's one here in the treasury. So we'll, we'll work on that and present that back to city council.
Thank you.
Any other questions that we can answer about that? I think, I think this was a great conversation and a great discussion. I think that, I think Michelle and Ed did a great job on the paper with Heather and Mary's input. A lot of it was done before, I even saw it, and we just had a lot of talented staff members, so it's nice to be able to work with them. So thank you very much, your time was a great time.